For coming tonight, I know that there are a lot of new faces on the dais today. I think what we'll do is start with the left, if that works okay with you. And the first question is, what qualifications do you bring and what distinguishes you from the other candidates? As an incumbent, what meetings, committees, or commissions have you participated in recently that provide the basis of your knowledge to serve effectively?
Okay, thank you for the question. I think what qualifies me to be in this position first is I bring a fresh set of eyes to any issue that would be brought forward to the council. I spent over 40 years in the fire department. I've done 33 years as a professional down in Washington, DC. I retired as a deputy fire chief. All the issues that I faced during my career were a lot of times truly life and death decisions, and we had very little time to make those decisions. So when you bring an issue up as a committee, I can research, work with other people, and come up with a solution. I've lived in what is now District 5, okay? I've lived there for well over 30 years. My wife is a retired schoolteacher. My kids were raised and born in District 5. District 5 was not in existence when I moved up there. I'm probably the only person, or one of the only people here, that actually saw all District 5 being built. So I know every square inch of that district because I run it, I talk to the people, and every answer that I give tonight is going to be in the context of representing the community in District 5. We have to understand that. Even though the city as a whole, we have common interests in representing the city as a whole, but the priority for me and my questions and my answers will be the residents in District 5. And so we need to remember that.
Thank you. Ms. Hempel-Lerone, you're next, please. What qualifications do you bring and what distinguishes you from the other candidates? And what meetings, committees, or commissions have you participated in recently that provide the basis of knowledge you'll need to serve?
Excellent. I'm Sarah Hempel-Lerone in District 5. I work in public art, and a lot of people, when they think of art, they think of a hobby. But this is no hobby. This is my business. I work on West Fifth Street, and I've been there for 25 years. In the work that I do, many of you have seen on the creek. In this work, my primary role is to listen to communities and help them tell their stories. I write contracts, I deal with budgets, I work with contractors and fabricators. In fact, right now, I am working on a project that's going to take me to fabrication in Italy. I'm importing marble and working with bronze foundries. But the most important part of this is how I'm able to collaborate with communities. When we put the Claire McCardle sculpture on the creek, this is not mine alone. This is the work of the community, the work of different nonprofits and donors, and La Memorial installed it, and we had a lighting designer to the meetings. So I've been attending city council meetings, and I've been going to some committee meetings. And I think my favorite one so far has been the Active Mobility Committee. I think they're having a good time. They're talking about really forward-thinking transportation. I've met with a lot of residents, and that is the most exciting part about this, is hearing what people think all over District 5, outside of my neighborhood into Whittier and North Crossing and Willowbrook. I've been all over the county, or all over the district. So, I think.
Thank you very much. Mr. Trout.
Hi, good evening. My name is Ryan Trout. I'm running in District 5 for city council. And what qualifies me to sit on your city council? Well, I have a 15-year public service career, starting in AmeriCorps. I worked for Senator Ron Young in the Maryland General Assembly as his chief of staff, and then spent time working for both the city of Baltimore and Frederick County. I currently run the Department of Housing and Community Development in another jurisdiction. And so as you heard in the previous panel and on the mayor's panel earlier, housing affordability is a paramount issue in this campaign, and I have the day-to-day experience running a department, understanding what it takes to take policies and implement them into programs, and understanding the burdens on staff. I have a master's in public policy and an MBA. I was on the Affordable Housing Council early in my tenure here, working in Frederick County. I was the vice chair of the United Way of Frederick County. I served on the county executive's Housing and Quality of Life Transition Team, where I co-led that effort, which is great because we currently have, the county and city are partnering on a housing needs assessment that we'll be able to implement those over this next term. During my time at the county, I led the Emergency Rental Assistance Program during the COVID pandemic, working with community partners to get millions of dollars out to tenants to ensure that they stayed stably housed. I led the rewrite of the moderately priced dwelling ordinance, which included partners at the city. So a year after we passed it at the county, the city then adopted the same inclusionary zoning policy. I was part of the mayor's task force on rental licensing and inspections program that was based on a paper I wrote in grad school. And so far in this campaign, I've canvassed over 1,000 houses, being able to talk to all of my neighbors across the district, ensuring that they have access to good-quality parks, they don't have overcrowded schools, and affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Trout, Mr. Garcia, District 4.
Hi, my name is Freddie Ventura. I'm running for District 4, and thank you for being here. So what qualifications I have? I've actually served for almost a decade in my condo association, where I've had to deal with a disgruntled resident's budget and where to spend the money that we have. As far as what distinguishes me, I mean, I think that's a low-hanging fruit. My age, I am the youngest candidate here. And as far as I know, I'm the only gay immigrant of color here. So I think I could bring a unique perspective that the council could, would be of value to the council, as well as showing more equitable representation that we clearly did not have in the former body.
Thank you. Mr. Lasher.
My name is Scott Lasher. I'm running in District 4 as well. I think I invite you to imagine what is the quality, or what are the set of qualities that a legislator would require. And I think if you examine it for yourself, you'll recognize that in my background, I've probably done it all, given the fact that I've owned businesses, given the fact that I've been a trial lawyer for many years, given the fact that I have been on the boards of many nonprofit organizations, which have dealt with things involving mental health, which involved the arts districts, which have involved things like, I was on the board of directors of ACLU. In other words, I've done a variety of things, both as a trial lawyer, both as a business owner, as a member of a board of directors. I spent two years in the Peace Corps in Ukraine. I've been in AmeriCorps and dealt with the poor in rural West Virginia. In the Navy, I was in the Navy. I was a Chinese linguist with the Naval Security Group, spent time at NSA. I was also, obviously, in Ukraine, a linguist, learning Ukrainian. So I have a real good sense of culture, and so I've been able to deal with many cultures across my life. I've been a mediator, I've been an arbitrator. I've had qualities that I think are very important as we attempt to work together on this council. And so again, I invite you to think through what it is that you would imagine from a legislator and believe that those characteristics I possess.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lasher. Next is Mr. Brem.
Great, thank you. Kudos to the people who organized our forum tonight, and thank you, citizens, for joining us. My qualifications? First up, my name is Peter Brem, and in addition to owning a business in the city of Frederick, for the past 20 years, I've been engaged with Frederick's nonprofits and stepped in to serve when needed with local government. I'm ready to bring that experience to City Hall. I was a NAC coordinator for 10 years. I serve as treasurer for the Student Homelessness Initiative Partnership, and I'm a founding board member and serve as treasurer for the Frederick Center, Frederick's local LGBTQ resource. I'm president of the Evangelical Reformed United Church of Christ, and I have served as secretary for the Frederick County Continuum of Care Collaborative, as well as president of Friends of Baker Park when that organization addressed the Color Lake Renaissance. I've also served under Ryan's leadership on the county executive's transition task force in the housing subcommittee. I've shown up, and I've done the work, and I look forward for the votes for my District 3 neighbors. In terms of meetings, in addition to door knocking and attending most of the city council meetings and city council committees, I've met with Katie Barkdahl to talk about the budget, as well as Housing Frederick, the Frederick Housing Coalition, architect Bruce Zavos, the Housing Authority of Frederick, the Frederick County Builders Association, the Frederick County Association of Realtors, and the Frederick County Land Use Council. I've attended an event that Ann Ryan organized on interfaith housing that uses church properties for affordable housing. I've met with Citizens for Responsible Growth. I've met with the Frederick Health Hospital, Hood College, Dairy Maid, East Frederick Rising, the Downtown Partnership, the Frederick Chamber of Commerce, and the Golden Mile Alliance. I've met with Brewers Alley, Ever Ready, and Chab Row, Warner Commercial, Arch, Mobilize Frederick, and attended every NAC 6, NAC 9, NAC 11, NAC 12, and NAC 10 meeting because they're all in District 3. I met with Jennifer Dougherty, I met with council member Donna Kozumczek, council member Katie Nash, and I have to stop. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brem. Mr. Schmidt.
Good evening. I could go through the list. Born and raised here, love this city, a Marine Corps veteran, small business owner, own a downtown business, so forth, so forth. I'm endorsed by an entire generation of leaders because they understand that my experience is what distinguishes me from my opponent. I've worked on projects with a lot of you in the room. I'm probably the only one with the trifecta. My first-ever job was with a realtor, obviously Building Association and Chamber of Commerce. My success comes not just from my capacity to accomplish things. Most of you that have worked with me on a project understand I can get things done. But it really comes from, before I'm about to start something, before I'm ever going to join anything, or I'm going to run something, the first thing I do is, I go and I find everyone that has done that before. There are jurisdictions all over the country that have dealt with housing, that have dealt with transit. I go and I find the people who've done it before, and I ask them, what did you do wrong? What's all the biggest mistakes you made? What's the things that you wasted the most amount of money on? And that's the list, that when we come back to our community, which is filled with incredible people that have tons of experience, both in their life and their career, and we say, how are we going to tackle this problem? How are we going to fix this problem? We have a list of all the bad ideas, and we can reference that list and say, this city wasted money here, this jurisdiction wasted money there. So, listen, I sign paychecks every week. There are families that depend on me to make good decisions for them to feed themselves and their children. I have spent my career fixing difficult problems, solving difficult puzzles. I don't want to talk and talk and talk and talk. I want to listen, and then I want to do something.
Thank you very much, Mr. Schmidt. Mr. Diaz.
Hi, my name is Sascha Diaz, running for District 2. Thanks for having us. Meetings, what meetings have I taken? I could list a really long list. I'd use up all my time and get the little red card, because we've all been to a lot. Meetings with business leaders, former city staff, current city staff, religious organizations, nonprofits, Golden Mile Alliance, for example, that is active in my district, members from East Frederick Rising, a lot of meetings. Something that probably doesn't qualify as a meeting, but I think I've spent more time doing that than actually sitting down across the table from someone, is talking to the people in my district, and knocking on doors, and listening to them. And I think that's my job, if I'm on the city council, and that's all our job, is to listen to our constituents. And that ties into what I think was one of my best skills. It's something I was told early in my adulthood that it was a skill that I had, which was being a good listener. And I'm like, I don't even know what that means. I just listen and I pay attention. It wasn't until I got older that I saw what a big and important and valuable skill that was in my professional life. I've been working in IT for 25 years, and I work in collaborative projects, listening to not only the technical people that are talking, but also what's the problem that we're trying to solve, and turning listening into problem solving. And in my extremely short, three-month political career, listening has actually paid off because I had a conversation with a voter whose politics are way to the right of mine. And after talking to them for 20 minutes, the lady told me, I've changed my mind about you because you're a good listener. Because that's what I did. I listened, I understood, we explained our points of view, and I think that's one of the best skills that I've got. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Diaz. Ms. Nash, I don't think you have to go over what meetings you've attended, because you're an incumbent on council.
Been a couple.
Would you talk about what distinguishes you from the other candidates?
Sure. I appreciate the question, and I appreciate that. I just want to say, first off, as the only incumbent running in this group, it takes a lot for new candidates to step forward to serve. And this group of folks, it has been just an absolute joy to work with. Yes, please, actually, yes. It's nerve-wracking to be up here. There are so many barriers. There are people that stand in your way, that do not want you to succeed, and I just appreciate having this opportunity to get to know all of you. For me, you know, I have a very unique background. It's the combination of just being absolutely in love with the idea of what government can do for people, but also working in the private sector. I work for an international company. We focus on Vision Zero goals all across the country. My territory is from Georgia up to Connecticut, believe it or not. It's a pretty big territory. But I get to talk about Vision Zero pedestrian safety all day. I really feel like I manifested that. If you knew when I first started running, what I was really passionate about was pedestrian safety, and then someone now pays me to do it all the time, it's really exciting. If you know me, you know that I have, my husband Josh and I, we have three teenagers. They are my world. I'm kind of surprised that I can even like walk and talk and chew gum, because I feel like my mom brain is 95%, especially going back to school. Here's a plug to slow down, because kids are going to be back in school, so please slow down. And I think just my role in the next couple of years is going to be shepherding the changes that we made. These charter changes, they took us a while. They took us a while for the last term to get through them. It was very deliberate. There were a lot of really good people. I saw Tom Lynch earlier. A lot of folks worked really hard on these charter changes. If you're not familiar with them, come see me. There was a lot more than just ranked choice voting discussed. I'm actually, I was shocked that that came up as a topic tonight. There were a lot of changes made. We still have work to do. We have to figure out redistricting. I'm hoping we get the question. That's why I'm using my time now. We still have things left to do. That's what's an open, the charter is a living document. So I'm really hopeful that in my term, my next term, I get to work with this group, my other friends, who are going to be working very hard to continue this growth and continue the work to improve our government. Thank you.
I'm really sorry that we've run so long and we're so much out of time, but I want to do something a little bit different than ask you just another set of questions. What I would like you to do is take a minute to tell us, what impels you to run for city council? What is the thing that you most want to accomplish in the next four years as a member of this council? And we'll start with you, Ms. Nash, because...
Yeah, so I decided to run in 2021 with really pedestrian safety. The question about growth and infrastructure, I think council vice president Shackleford was 100% correct. Cities are always, you know, we're always trying to meet the growth, we're always trying to meet the infrastructure, and that's what I got involved with, pedestrian safety. We have done good work. There is always going to be work to do. Specific to my district in District 1, I have the Waverly area. If you're familiar with Key Parkway, you will always see people walking, biking, jogging. There's still a lot of work to be done. Transit, bus shelters. I want everybody to leave this room being really excited about bus shelters and working with the county to make sure we actually achieve some bus shelters out where we live. So there's a lot left to do, and I appreciate the opportunity to keep serving.
Thank you. Mr. Diaz.
Can you repeat the question? Katie's answer, can...
Yes.
Why is that right? Okay, yeah. No, well, Katie's answer was awesome, I forgot.
No, I just, I want to give you an open-ended opportunity to talk about what you're really impelled to run for council for. What do you want to accomplish here?
Yeah, the reason why I'm running for council, and it sounds super corny, but it's because I love this city. I was talking to somebody earlier about, like, I heard a lot up here, like, oh, I was born here, I was born here, I've been here this many years. I've been here almost 30 years. I didn't, I wasn't born here. I didn't grow up here, but I made sure my kids did. I made sure my kids grew up here after I moved here, because this was such an amazing town. We came up here one time, my ex and I, for the weekend, we drove through Frederick on our way to the CNO Canal, and on the way back, we stopped here, and then I was fortunate enough to be assigned to work here when I worked for the state of Maryland, and we were really excited. So I love this city. What I'm hoping to accomplish is to be a voice for District 2. It was really the implementation of the district kind of setup for the city council that convinced me that this was the right time. Other folks came to me and said, hey, the district needs someone who can represent them. After months of them talking to me and me seeing things that I could make a difference, and seeing all the issues that I kept bringing up, like, well, I've been bringing these up, I might as well be the one who listens to the people and brings them forward.
Thank you very much. Mr. Schmidt.
So about 10 years or so ago, I wrote an op-ed in the FNP that said, almost all of our representation in the city has lived north of Patrick Street, west of Marcus Street, inside the 15 bubble, and that needed to change. Finally, 10 years later, they passed the charter, so a little bit is, put your money where your mouth is. But a big part of it is, we have, as they talked about in every previous set here at the forum, we have an opportunity to get this right, to focus the city on the residents. I've knocked on 3,500 doors in the last seven months. I have had countless conversations, and there are portions of the city that are comfortable. There are portions of the city that are doing well, and those portions of the city are okay with small incremental progress over time. But the reality is that the majority of the city is not comfortable. They're afraid. They're afraid that they're not going to be able to feed themselves, they're not going to be afraid that they're not going to be able to make rent, and there are portions, and I appreciate Libby, wherever she is, bringing this up in a previous forum, that there are portions of the city where you live significantly longer, if you happen to live in that neighborhood, than a neighborhood a mile or two away. I think that's immoral. And so when presented with the opportunity to represent my neighborhood, I live in a little 900-square-foot house down on Sixth Street, and the rest of the downtown district, I said, of course.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brem.
The catalyst for my running was the city charter. The charter gives us two tools that we didn't have previously. First, it gives us direct political accountability between the neighbors and neighborhoods and the elected council person. That's a role and responsibility that I want to take on, because after 10 years as a NAC coordinator and a resident for 20 years, I am impatient with responsiveness that I'm finding from my political and staff people at City Hall. So I want to be the person to advocate for my neighbors and my neighborhoods. Second, city council is now in a much stronger position to provide oversight, oversight over city programs. So for example, why are we still so far behind on the West Side Regional Park? I think city council can be a catalyst for pushing that forward faster. And while we're talking about money, at the end of this past fiscal year, we have unspent $1.1 million in rental licensing fees, $300,000 in forest conservation fees, $4.2 million in MPDU fees, and $3.4 million in school mitigation fees, and $3 million in park fees. I think city council can provide guidance to the city about how to spend that money so that residents of the city are benefiting from these collective funds. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lasher.
I feel really strongly about the 2010 City of Frederick Conferences Plan. I feel very strongly about it. I feel very strongly that it has been largely ignored in the last few years. I feel very much about accountability to that plan. It may require some revision modifications, some revisiting, but the reality is that that is a plan that was designed through incredible amount of effort, work, time, commitment by the people. I want to give it back to the people. I want it to be a much more people-driven system that we have. I feel that we've lost sight of that. So when Peter and when Libby talk about the NACs, I definitely feel very strongly about resurrecting or revitalizing, making the NACs valuable, because you want to start bottom up. When I look at the small area plans, I believe so strongly in them. We have two that have been approved, but they're not being implemented, or at least not being implemented as they should. When I've met and I represent in the East Frederick, East Frederick Rising, I so strongly believe in that small area plan. And then when you move up, we talk about the Form Based Code. There are just so many aspects of what is in the comprehensive plan that need to be not only revisited, but visited, given power, and that's my intent, is to bring it from bottom up.
Thank you, Mr. Lasher. Mr. Garcia.
So foremost, I want to be a voice and advocate for District 4. And then the second thing would be that I honestly just want to shake things up. Talking to people all ages around the city, one thing that I've heard is everybody's tired of all the career politicians that have just kept the status quo in the city. And that's honestly very evident, walking around the city, seeing a lot of the incumbents, yard signs mixed with my Republican opponent, which I find very interesting. Also, I need thoughts of believing that the city council needs to act like the branch of government that they're supposed to be. They're an equal branch of government. They're not supposed to just sign off whatever the mayor says. We need to legislate and govern and listen to our constituents, not just proofread and give a check to the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia, and Mr. Trout.
Thank you very much. And what a good question. This is a question I get often. Why put yourself out there? Why go door-to-door on a 95-degree day and talk to 100 people in your neighborhood to really only have, you know, 15 answer the door? And it's a few reasons. I'm a father of three. I spent yesterday at an open house for middle school, which, like Katie, I'm not ready for. I've got a nine-year-old, and I've got a two-year-old. And as I mentioned earlier, I run a department, and we're all on pins and needles, as we're waiting for the shoe to drop in another decision from the federal government that's going to hurt vulnerable populations in our communities. We're all waiting for the ripple effect and how it's going to hurt federal workers in our community. And for me, that was the catalyst. Watching the federal government retreat from its responsibilities, from its commitments to our community, said to me that I have to do something. We all have to do something that's within our capacity and our power. My skills at this moment, as you heard before, happen to match this moment, where housing affordability is at a crisis, where our community needs folks who have spent time in local government, running programs and getting stuff done. And so for me, that was why I decided to run for office. It was so I could bring my background and my skills to the city council to help move things forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trout, and Ms. Hempel-Lerone.
I grew up in a military family, and I'm not really from anywhere. And I moved here when I was 22 years old, chasing my dream to be a monument sculptor. I mean, who does that? And 25 years later, I'm still here in Frederick. And here in Frederick, I built my business. I met my husband. I found a church. We started our family. This city has given me all those dreams. I live in a neighborhood where I can walk across the street to church. I can walk to my studio where I work. I know the people in my neighborhood from Seventh Street all the way to Fifth Street. This is my home now. I'm from somewhere. And when we installed the Claire McCardle sculpture, 400 people came, kind of at the end of COVID, to watch this unveiling, to see what we had done together. And I saw how much is possible when we work together. I'm a great collaborator, and I have fresh ideas. I'm not in government. People say, oh, you're going to be a politician. I'm not a politician. I'm interested in public service. I'm interested in serving my neighbors. I'm interested in serving the city that gave me a home and a life and a business and all of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Callahan?
Okay, thank you. Very passionate. Okay, what intrigued me to get into this race was the creation of the District 5. I think, I like the fact that the charter change included this. To me, it brings the government closer to the citizens, and a government closest to the citizens is going to operate most efficiently. I have basically four key issues that I want to focus that are specific to, it's probably specific to the whole city, but definitely what I'm hearing from District 5 is lower tax rate. Let me explain about that. I heard the mayor say, and I compliment him, they did lower the tax rates, but the increase in assessment values is going through the roof. My house, I think, is tripled in value. That's great, right? If I want to sell. I don't get a penny out of that if I don't sell. I don't... I don't intend to sell because I'm going to stay here like all you. I love here. I love being here. So that's a huge issue. I'm also a proponent of more police presence in the neighborhood. We have a great police department. However, I don't think police are actually, are patrolling the areas. We need more of an effort there with police patrolling districts. But finally, what I'm seeing in Whittier, people my age, they retire, they move. The kids, they go through our great public schools. They either go into workforce or they go to college, and they never come back. So I want to see Frederick get to the point it's affordable so our kids can actually come back.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Mr. Callahan gets the last word tonight. We thank you all for coming in and participating in this, and I'm sorry we didn't have more time.[1784.88][1784.88]